Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call me to order. We're back in session. We're gonna forego all everything we did all this morning. So, our topic is the Cole County Senior Real Estate Property Tax Free Program. And we have hopefully the final application, correct?
Hopefully. That's the key word there, hopefully.
Okay.
We'll know about an hour after this meeting's over.
I'm not in charge of this.
That's all the time you got.
I have a few things to show.
I think Larry's the spokesman. Our illustrious collector.
Well, I have the draft website that I can show at some point. And I also have the web form that I can run through, how it's gonna work. I've just got a draft of that also.
Okay, just wanna make sure everybody does have the copy of the last application and the proposed flow chart for work that Melissa put together for us. She cleaned up the application mainly because when I copy and paste certain stuff, it stays in the background that I wasn't aware of anyway. So she cleaned all that up and I'm very thankful for that. We made some changes that Judy suggested, again. Not to point that out or anything, but...
Thank you, thank you.
And they were good changes, so that's what hurts me. But we shortened the proof of ownership, took off of it what we... Some of the information we had about for the attorney factor, personal representative, and added that to the back. I think it now says property tax free, senior real estate property tax free's everywhere now. That's been corrected. So I'm good with reviewing what you've done for the website and...
Okay. You wanna do the website first or the form, web form first, do you care?
Either is...
Okay.
Can I say something? Not to add salt to the room, but our Boone County, they're only taking it till June 25 and not leaving it all the way open till 26. Do you guys, you all agree with that?
It's different.
They're freezing...
Starting 24.
This is their second year.
Oh, this is their second. Oh, no wonder, okay, okay. It just seems like having it open it so long, it just seems like weird.
And those that wanna apply for a freeze in '26, the next age go around would have, actually have till '27 to apply.
And we can maybe shorten it to a couple months or something?
Yes, yes.
Okay, 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 sorry.
And change the reapplication process. That's something we haven't talked about yet, but we can talk about that a little as we get into the meeting.
Ready?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. So this is the draft copy of the website that I've got put up. So I'm happy to hear any suggestions or comments. I start out with just kind of how we got to this point with the tax, with the tax freeze and put the Missouri statute on there. I'm not sure if we wanna somewhere put the commission's... I don't know if you did an ordinance or how that came about. I don't know if we... I kinda put this about Cole County tax freeze in case we need to put a link to that or document or whatever there. But I don't think that's... I think the state tax, the revised statute is probably more important than that one. I don't know. That's just up for discussion. I created a couple buttons for when we have the applications ready. I do have the latest application on here, so they can just click here and get that pulled up. I don't have that connected to anything, the apply online. I've just got basic information on this front page. And I could take screenshots of this stuff and email it out if you guys want at a later time. But basically, it's the basic information that is on the website with kind of some contact information. Here, we're the proof of ownership. I have this, you will need your parcel identification number. And I also have here, I'll open this in a new tab, but just a picture of where to find that on your tax bill. And I can add more of that kind of stuff if we feel like we need it. Then I also have a link here, this goes to Larry's Tax Search. So actually, I probably need to have it to go...
Straight to that webpage.
Yeah, so I can change that. But let's see. The other things that I have on this right-hand side is the new email address that we have for the senior tax freeze. I have a blurb here about the in-person assistance is gonna be starting. I don't have a date here, but the times are gonna be Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday from 10 to 3, location. I may put a little map link there in case somebody doesn't know where it is, but got drop-off location here. I'm not sure what, if there are gonna be other offices that are gonna have drop boxes or if it's just gonna be the collector's. Probably good to just have one location to prevent confusion and lessen the chance that something's gonna happen to that box. And then I just put applications and supporting documents must be in sealed envelope with the property owner name on the front. I don't know if we need more information on that envelope than just the owner name, maybe parcel number or phone number or something, I don't know. But I don't know how you guys usually do those dropbox things. Then I put the application link thing here, but then I added it here, so I can delete it from down there. And then I just put links to, again, the collector's Tax Search and then Minmo GIS in case somebody needs to go out there and look up their parcel or maybe they have multiple parcels, they need to find out which one is the one that they wanna claim. And then I have the FAQs page. So people can go here and look at more information if they didn't find what they need on that first page. And this should be the latest and greatest. And I'll probably actually put a copy of a downloadable PDF somewhere too in case somebody wants to print that out. I think that'd be good to have. So that's what I've got. I'm trying to keep it simple and clear. Most people don't wanna read much of texts when they're on a website, so... Like I said, I can make a copy of what I've got there and if anybody wants to give me their suggestions, I'm happy to make changes as needed.
I think we do need to send a copy to everybody so that whoever's working and taking applications knows what, knows for sure what they're supposed to be looking at from...
The FAQs, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I was also thinking if we put a copy of the FAQs on the... And the other thing I was thinking, we might wanna think about creating an info sheet so that like people, if they come in, we can hand them a sheet that has maybe a web address and a QR code so that they know where to go to and have that basic information about like the requirements and the documentation they're gonna need, that they have that paper in their hand, maybe like a...
That would be a good one to take home too, right?
Yeah, a half sheet or a full sheet, like info sheet.
Because they may have questions once they do get home.
And those could go to the different, like the assessor's office maybe could have a few of them and quarter's office, the offices that would primarily deal with those customers. So I kinda started working on that, but I haven't gotten very far yet. So that's it for that.
Looks good.
Looks very good. All right. Okay, so I got logged out.
Have I been approved of that yet?
We take a vote, sir. I have one in favor and everyone else again.
And was he the one that was in favor?
Oh, no, I voted against the two. I put it forward.
Have you got, did you get the accounts payable?
Yeah, three of them, right.
Yeah. Did they have them finished?
Yeah, they were in red, so I wasn't gonna approve them.
Well, Debbie and I can figure out why they're showing red, because they should, they're not.
We did the transfer.
Yes, they're the...
Thank you. Okay, so this is the draft copy of the web form. So this is the first page that you get to and I might have too much information on here, but I don't want people to have to go back and forth if they didn't read the webpage. So basically telling them they need to have everything ready because when they digitally, they digitally sign it and review the document, they'll be asked to attach those documents. So I'm just gonna fill in some big information. Just pretend that I'm typing in stuff that is actually real. And it just categories, the same categories that are on the application, basically. And actually, this is what, this is based on an uploaded version of this...
Application?
Yeah. So then you review your information. And I may do some rules on some of these that like I kinda ran through, the applicant age, residence. If they say no, no, they're not 62, I probably need to have a rule that says, "I'm sorry, you're not eligible" or something, so that they don't keep going. So I'll probably do that, but like I said, this is the second form I've done, so... Okay, so once that is all filled out, you do next and it says, "We've received your form." And then it should pull up the sign. Wait a minute. Okay, what did I do here? I did a demo with the DocuSign people this morning, so let me see what I did. Should have the signature page come up and it should be a copy of the form.
So it will automatically pop up?
Well, I'll show you what it will look like. I don't know why it's not showing up. I may have to get back with them. But let's see, templates. And then this is a template. And if I go to edit... Next. Okay, so basically what I just went through and filled out, that will all, in that thing that I was expecting to pop up, will all be filled out here now. And then they'll be able to attach the documents that they need to attach for each of these items. And then also sign. And I do have one question about the signing. So if somebody is going to be signing as the attorney in fact or personal representative for the applicant, do we need two separate signature lines? Because the applicant wouldn't be signing, so I would think you would just need the one signature for that. Does that make sense?
It's either on the top line or the second line, whichever.
Well, the way our deeds are, it has the person signing it and then it has who they're signing for, so it does have both signatures.
Okay. So the person that's doing it for the applicant could, in theory, do both electronically. I'll just go ahead and leave them both then. And then they have a space that they can attach that.
Then you know who they're applying for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And so once those are all signed and the documents are attached, then you'll submit it and it will package all of the documents together and upload it. And then that's where we're kind of, once this is all done and we've got it, everything figured out, we'll work with Therefore on how to get that stuff pushed down and into But that's how that's gonna work. And this is what it'll look like when the customer finishes filling it out. They'll get this popped up with everything populated and then they'll just attach the documents and sign.
Looks pretty user-friendly.
I think it, yeah, it seems to be, I just have to find out why that didn't pop up because it popped up earlier when we did it. And so like I said, I'm brand-new to this. I've not done a form like this before, so I gotta find out why it didn't pop up. It's probably something I left off the form when I did it again.
If you hit it back row instead of back, will it lose all the information you put in there?
No. As long as you stay in your browser and you don't clear your cache, it saves your progress.
Okay.
So that's a good thing.
Fill in things before, so just do not hit your back.
Yeah, no, no. I did ask them that.
They tried to dummy proof it.
Yeah. So as long as you're using the same computer, same browser and everything, it's saving it in your cache and so it should, just don't clear your cache while you're doing it for them.
You do what I know of.
So let me ask though, as far as saving that functionality, if I am inputting, if I am populating the sections, does it automatically save or do I have to click?
As you're going through that first part that I showed you, the...
Okay, so I gotta manually click.
So on that web form that I just went through...
Yes, okay.
As you're going through each step, it's saving that page. So you're 0% complete and then it'll go up percentage of how much percent complete it is. And you can go back if you think you did something wrong and you need to fix it. Like I said, as long as you're in that browser and you haven't cleared your cache or anything, you should be good.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Ralph may be filling out more than one of those, so does that save that as several ones for him or is there gonna be a different way to access that?
I think in that case, he might have to, might wanna finish it because you wouldn't want to get people mixed up, yeah.
Yeah. All I did was fill one out manually to get the feel for what I was trying to do.
Yeah.
But as far as attachments, so my driver's license and my wife's should suffice for two of the three proofs of document.
You only need one proof of identity. Okay, you're meaning for each one of those.
Yeah, because my wife's name is on there.
But if you wanna provide three, I'll be glad to take credit card information.
No. Now you sound like my clients.
There is a limit of five document attachments though, so... But we have like five attachment fields, so that should work out fine.
My driver's license is good for these two.
Yeah, so that would be one.
And all I have to do is attach my little thing from the envelope that Larry gives you.
Your tax bill, yeah, or your tax receipt.
Larry's present.
Yeah. And then like on that back page, if somebody's signing for somebody else, they would need their personal representative or power of attorney or whatever documentation. And then the other, only other thing is that owner, ownership type, if it's other entity, they have to attach the trust agreement or operating agreement, so... But that's where I'm at. I guess I've still gotta work out why that didn't...
You'll figure it out.
Mark, do you need to run? We can talk about changing the schedule, so you don't have to stay if you don't want to.
Well, I'll stay. I do have maybe a stupid question. Do you have to be 62?
Before January 1st.
Okay, but this process is gonna go on till next year.
But 2025 is the qualifying year, so you have to be 62 before January 1st of 2025.
Oh, even if you apply for it next year too?
Well, no, if you apply, the 25 is gonna affect your '26 taxes.
Right.
If you turn 62 after January 1 of '25, then you can apply for the '26 freeze. It won't affect until your '27 taxes.
Okay. But in reality, there's gonna be no freeze until '27 because next year's not a reassessment year here. Assessment won't go up next year, pretty much anybody. Okay.
We can make sure that happens for you.
If this process is gonna continue into next year, correct?
Everybody has to reapply, as far as I know from every collector I've talked to, they reapply every year.
But if we have them fill it outside, come in May 1st and fill that, turn it in, do I need to reapply then next year even though I've...
Yes.
But a renewal shouldn't be as involved as the original application.
Right. We haven't talked about that.
Okay, we're gonna get a lot of people coming in since we announced that the application's available. So they'll fill it out this year, they're gonna have to come back again next year before June 30.
Several, several first-class...
And then fill it out again.
Sorry to interrupt you, but several first-class counties are just mailing out a card that alls they have to do is check off if any information has changed, if there's been any improvements, and sign and return that card and that automatically renews them for the next year. They don't even have to come in.
Yeah, I would think next year.
Boone County's doing that.
Run new and should be next year.
Green County's doing that. And Green is a huge county, so...
Okay, well then I'll lighten your load and I won't apply for it till next year because my taxes shouldn't go up.
We're trying to figure that out if there's any instance where it does.
Right.
I think the way they can go up is with new construction and new construction's not easy.
I think they're freezing anyway, right.
And what's this problem with the State Tax Commission and all this, that all these counties are having changes in the world?
Who knows?
Yeah, yeah.
Did you get the microphone up?
In theory, you're right, but I would, anybody asks me, I'm gonna say you need to apply when you, as soon as you qualify.
And then next year, you'll say, "Fill out the card" if we did that.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
I like that.
That would be my advice.
And DevNet's supposed to have some more functionality next year for some of this stuff to make it smoother.
And I told you there wouldn't be any more changes to the application, but I lied to you. Gretchen and I, we used, you know, Ralph submitted his application and Gretchen and I used that for training this morning with DevNet on their system. The only thing I would change on our application is what we're using for checkoff on the bottom now.
Well, that is, that's a good thing, comment, because that's gonna come back to the flow chart and how are we going to, if we have documents scanned into Therefore, do we, are we gonna really be able to, is it gonna be feasible to use that? Are we gonna print everything out and do a lot of paper and check that off or are we gonna do it electronically so that we don't have to like print stuff out?
Well, I don't know, that's... I think that depends on what functionality you all give us. I know that Brian and I have talked about the Therefore, software workflow and...
Wizard.
Yeah. And I'll let you explain that. But I've offered to pay for that out of my tax maintenance fund, which would actually allow us to, should allow us to complete them completely on the computer, online, or not online, but in the system.
That wouldn't be applicable for even any of the office.
We wouldn't need the paper application. But DevNet, in their process, they have credit detail, reasons why you get the, would get the credit, and they also have denied reasons. And those may be what we wanna put on the back here. They're very similar, but there's just more of them. And when we, when we go to entering the information in, once we get the application in our office, I mean, it's these questions that we have to answer yes or no to and then approve or disapprove the application and then they automatically, I've got two sample letters here, one of the approval and one of the denied, they're making some corrections to that for us, gonna put our county watermark in the background of those. But we can choose denied reason, it'll say why it's denied in the letter that goes out or the approval just says it's approved. But there's a list of them, it's pretty, and then it also has an audit trail. Every entry I made this morning on, or I didn't make them, Jackie made them. Co-applicant's name change, when we added co-applicants, gives you the date, complete, status applicant name change, added credit to property. So it's, you know, just as an audit trail on the stuff that you all are doing creates, DevNet creates it in their system. And then we just have to choose the base tax year. Actually, when we put Ralph's name in, it pulled in all his, we went to his account, went in here and said, "Add senior tax credit," and it pulled in all his information on this page, his name and actually both his and his wife's name. We changed that all when his applicant, we had to change it, make her the co-applicant. And we really only need one applicant on these, so you wouldn't have, taxpayers aren't gonna have to submit both their husband and the wife in order to qualify. Only one of them has to qualify. So those are probably, I'll send you those and you can look at it and tell me what you think.
So is it pulling in there the ownership as the assessor's office has it?
Yes. As it is on that.
Yeah, okay.
The thing that we have to check, I mean, the main thing that we check on the application is that the parcel number the taxpayer put on here is the same parcel number that we're pulling up in DevNet to make sure it's the same.
Yeah.
Same person, so. And I don't know if you wanna address what therefore wizard.
Well.
Should be able to do, or.
So, uh, what we kinda worked out, or what we started talking about, was how to best automate this. And put a system of checks in place that were on required fields. So Melissa and I got together, and we created this flow chart as far as how things are gonna happen at a higher level. You know, when, as far as like the public experience, whether they do the walk-in, or whether they do the, the online application. But the wizard is gonna follow pretty much what Melissa designed through the online experience. So, so like if you have a customer that comes in, then it'll walk, um, whomever through the process as far as, you know, what things they need to fill out. The probably, you know, the, the order they need to fill them out, and then what documents they need to have attached. So in order to do that, we had to basically buy a higher, higher level of the product in the licensing, and so I talked to Larry about it. And so, uh, we've gotten tentative pricing on that without the professional services, but, uh, I should, I should have that once Melissa and I finish. Exactly what we're looking at in the way of, of, uh, the details on that, that workflow process, so.
Thanks to Mark, you have an extra week now.
Thank you.
Should be three weeks, but Larry wouldn't give.
In the unlikely event that you have a sixty-two-year-old with a fifty-nine-year-old spouse. And he fills it out, I'm saying he's the sixty-two-year-old. And a year later, he dies, she's still not sixty-two. Is there a way to catch that one, so it doesn't slip through?
Well, they, if they have to reapply, you should be able to catch it then.
Cuz it'll ask if.
When do they reapply?
Yeah.
Every, every year.
Every year.
What if he dies after they reapply?
I would think it would catch it the next year.
Yeah, if I got the agrees.
I think you die in, you die December one, uh, after the tax bills have gone out.
That's kind of a tough question, because even.
I know it is, that's why I said in the likely event.
Well, even people who, they don't always file a death certificate in our office for us to deliver to the assessor. They may not even do that for a year, or until an attorney asks them to, so I'm not sure how that could be applied.
The clerk, the clerk reads every obituary that he can, and drops them off the voter rolls as quick as he can. Uh, so maybe somehow he could loop in here.
I wasn't even sure he was alive.
The clerk's office.
So you're saying then, if the clerk reads the obituary and he can loop it in, someone could just research Devonnet and see?
Possibly, yeah.
Like something like that?
I think you might put a star around anybody who is, you know, in this, well, I don't know what range of age you wanna put, but he, he does. I, I asked him one time, what do you do the rest of the year when, when you don't have an election? He said, oh, we're busy, we are watching obituaries and getting them off the tax rolls. I said, okay.
If that's a source that would already have that data, maybe somehow he gets looked in here, or this office.
Worth saving six bucks?
I mean, well, is there a date, a specific date that is gonna be on that.
Qualified.
Renewal form that says.
It's January first every year.
So if has.
I mean, that's the qualifying.
Has the applicant, is the applicant just ceased as of, or something like that? Would that be something that you would need to add on to?
They have to do their taxes.
Well, I think one of the questions is, are you still the owner of the property?
Yeah.
On that card, obviously, if anybody could check that, how you, you know, I, I'm sure.
But if the co-applicant is.
Something's gonna slip through.
Yeah, if the co-applicant isn't under that age, and they are still the owner, then that's not gonna, that might be confusing to them.
But your tax on the property you own as of January one, so.
Yeah.
If you die later that year.
That's for the next year.
And then when you reapply the next year, it should hopefully catch that person's die.
Yeah.
That, maybe so. Taxes are fully earned on January one of each year.
Yeah.
They're just not due until December thirty-first.
Looking for the guy who goes to his New Year's Eve party on December thirty-first and dies on the way to the party. Getting a tax credit the next year.
So the spouse could apply, reapply.
Not if she's old enough.
I mean, she can, she can say everything's the same and sign it fraudulently, and then at that point, that's kind of.
But then if.
That could get her in trouble.
Yeah.
Cuz he's not gonna be able to apply for it, obviously.
She would have to check that she's sixty-two and older, though, and she wouldn't be able to check that unless she's, you're saying fraudulent.
Yeah, if she's signing it in his name and he passed away on a, or didn't even make it to their New Year's Eve, so, you know.
I mean, there's certain things that are kinda beyond our control as far as checking on.
Well, there's a penalty statement or something on the, on the application, right?
Well, yeah, the, the big thing is gonna be, can you catch them?
Yeah. I think we just have to do our due diligence, so.
Would the clerk's office be able to give us a list that we can cross-reference?
Yeah.
And then go back and look, if an applicant is.
Asking my list for the list of dropped, uh.
Well, the, we get our obituaries from, well, we call them death lists, from the health and senior services from the state. It used to be in paper format, but now it's all done electronically through our voter registration. So we get, uh, I think we can run a report, and it does a comparison, a hundred percent match or eighty percent. And then we have to go look at each one to make sure we are deleting the correct person, but there might be something, we can get, um. A list of some sort to cross-reference.
You could furnish the group with the list of dropped voters due to death, wouldn't that catch it?
Um, we can search by deleted voters, I don't know if we can do a, a date range, though, cuz it, we have deleted voters from ten years ago in our system still.
Okay.
So I don't know if we can put a date range, I'd have to do a search and check.
Would you check that for us, please?
Yeah, I can do that.
So do they have to be current on their, their, uh, tax paid, because it, it doesn't really say that. Proof of ownership, it's a copy of the real property tax bill, but yeah, we've got, I've got all these pretty envelopes I've gotten from Larry over the years. So say I just go in and spy, pull out twenty-twenty, it's got all this information for it, it's just twenty-twenty and not twenty-twelve.
I don't know if it was in the fax, but I did see somewhere it said taxes must be paid.
I believe it's on the certification here.
Yeah, I saw that.
So is anyone liable for the payment of real property tax on such homesteads?
I saw somewhere it said taxes must be paid.
I saw it down here in your little gray box, where you go.
I, I just put it here, um, on the website, I put it on there, under requirements, but I don't see it on here.
I would put it on here that just. Well, I, I've seen people coming in with the wrong.
Yeah.
The wrong year, you know, they just grabbed one, it might be, I think I've got one back to like twenty thirteen, you know, I might. I like the color of the envelope best, I'll edit it and bring it in.
Um, well, besides that, I think we're sitting on the laptops, we're setting up, uh. Tax inquiry, Devonnet's tax inquiry, which I, which I believe.
On that.
Whoever's taking the applications can pull up their.
Their account.
Their account, see if it's paid or not.
They would be denied if they're not current on their tax.
Yes.
So they would get a, a card or a letter saying you're not eligible.
If we, if we need to.
Unless they were sitting right here, and we saw they weren't paid, we'd tell them, you know, qualified.
Add that here, we need to figure out, everything else needs to be added, cuz like I said, every time this changes, I have to completely redo that form, so. Let's get it all.
I just know you're gonna have some people are gonna bring in a tax receipt that isn't necessarily twenty-twenty-four.
I thought so, too.
You could simply go, you hit a website to see if it's paid.
Yeah.
I mean, it's right.
Well, that's what the tax inquiry thing.
But it doesn't say on here specifically that we expect that that's got to be paid, but it is on the website, but people maybe didn't, won't look at the website. They'll just look at the tax application.
Do you like the, if you add it under D, we already have that statement, and then you just add that they're saying that they're currently paid, they are current.
I had lib- liable and taxes are paid in full. I think that would work.
Yeah.
And current taxes are paid in full.
Yeah. Yeah, cuz I think I, I just pulled this verbiage from, um, other people's websites that I saw that.
Well, they try and explain to somebody that their twenty-twenty tax receipt doesn't, but it does, it does give you the, the information you need.
Was there something else, has somebody said that we needed to add to this earlier? I feel like there was somebody mentioned something else. Oh, should we need to put then, we do have on here already that in the case of joint ownership, only one owner need qualify. But do we need to put something like that next applicant name can be, or if only one property owner is.
That's a good place to put it.
Age or something, as qualifying age, then that person would be listed as applicant? I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there. Like I said, I'd like to make whatever the next one is, the final final.
So you need that little notation about that in the case of joint ownership, only one owner need qualify and apply, qualify slash apply, whatever put up by the applicant's name?
Oh, yeah, that, that might be good, just to move it up there.
That's a good, yeah, I like it.
Yeah. I can help with that, if you need, Larry. I've got the top latest.
It's better if you do it, cuz I don't have the knowledge, for one thing, I'm working on PDFs, so. Word document, I can really screw around, but PDF, a little tougher.
That's probably not a bad idea, because when I filled that one out, I thought, okay, it's got my name and Darlene, so we gotta. Go through it together and then sign it, or whatever.
But it, yeah, it really only needs to be one of, one of the owners.
And so one other question, I don't have any clients now who own their own property. But that's not to say I won't in the future, if I'm appointed as a new guardian, so I would sign there as personal representative.
And then you would have to attach whatever document makes you that.
Like my guardianship.
Yeah, guardianship or whatever.
Okay, that's what I thought. And with twenty twenty-five being the base year, nobody can really fill this out until they get their taxes for this year, right?
No, it's, it's not gonna, doesn't have, we want them filled out before they get their taxes, really.
And we're looking at April, by the end of April, right?
No, I, I, we're gonna still take them up till June thirtieth the next year, but it's nice if we get them, as many of them done now as we can.
So do I need?
It's not gonna affect their twenty twenty-five tax bill at all.
Do I need to redo mine?
No, for what reason?
Not sure.
Take your wife's name off?
No, no. No, but I noticed I failed to check off the box, the very first one, I was trying to copy and paste.
You're gonna get a denial letter.
Yeah, that's what I mean, I mean, I don't mind redoing it, didn't take me that long. Did you, did you not notice?
Somebody, if somebody does that.
No, I noticed it, but we just filled in the.
Oh, okay.
If somebody does that, and has a check box that they didn't check, and we catch that, and we say, okay, this is flagged, this person didn't mark this box. Are we gonna make them completely reapply, or are we gonna call them and say, you didn't fill this bo, you didn't check this box? So we don't know what, are we just gonna take their answer over the phone and say, okay, we call, we spoke to them on the phone, and they verified that this box. Should have been checked, or how are we gonna handle that?
I'm thinking we're gonna ask them to provide documentation.
So they would have to check that box?
Do a whole new application, but they would have to provide documentation for that answer.
So that kinda goes to my question the last week, that it would suspend it, it wouldn't kill it.
Right.
It would just suspend it, and they could go back in and add that documentation.
This denial letter says, please contact the collector's office if you have any questions about the determination, or to discuss any possibility of becoming eligible for this program in the future.
So it would kick in.
So if somebody.
And they had to follow up.
They'd have to follow up.
So if somebody checked, like have any improvements or additions been made to the property, if they didn't forgot to check anything on that line. How would they document that, to get that checked? Would they just send this sheet again and with that checked to you, or, I just, I either, sorry.
Because they can't go back and edit?
Yeah, yeah.
And they can't prove that they didn't have.
I, I think they would have to reapply, I wouldn't be a fan of checking it for them, or approving it over phone.
I would just hate to have somebody like have to totally redo the entire application because they forgot one line, but I don't know.
If they could just edit, if you approve it over phone, then you're gonna get, and we've learned in, just in ours, and maybe it's totally separate, that we can't, like they'll forget sometimes just to put a check mark. We can't even do that, uh, we've talked to attorneys, and they're like, no, you can't practice law, you have to reject that whole document. They have to fix it and resubmit it, and we have them initial it.
Well, this, go ahead.
No, so it'd be nice if they could just edit, but you're saying that's not possible.
They could come to the office and like get the, a copy and mark it, and then.
Add the documentation, yes.
Maybe something like that, I'm just trying to talk through the process.
Here's his home address, no.
Come on over.
The one online, will it have like a, if like a box isn't checked, will it have a pop-up?
There were, those are all required, every field is required except for the phone number, too, because not everybody has a second phone.
So it'll pop up and reply.
Yeah, so it won't let you go further unless you have that finished, so.
So in other words, if I did mine online, and I missed that very first box, something would pop up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you get a pop-up when you did, when you were testing and doing yours?
You're not gonna.
No, but I, I, no, I just did it manually.
Yeah, that's the difference between.
Sure, whatever you say.
Trust us, Mark.
Okay.
If a person, I don't know if this is the same as what Sam was saying, if that person applied now, they shouldn't have to apply next January, right? Because it's good till June thirtieth, right?
No, not, not for the twenty-five base year.
So if they apply this year, they don't have to actually apply again?
Applied between now and June thirtieth, is how I understand.
So that's what we're running, we're running times from like April twenty-third through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six? Just run it the whole time?
No, no, no.
Close it?
Hell, no.
So we're gonna, we're gonna close it this year, June thirtieth, and then, and then we'll open it again next year, April, June?
I haven't worked that out, thought through that yet, uh, I, I think some of that will depend on how many applications we get in this, say, first three-month run we do. Uh, then it may be where we set it up where we only have a few people, uh, coming up here to sit and wait or something.
So if we get like forty-five hundred this year, we can send out a card to those, as you were talking about, for next. So if we get like 4,500 this year, we can send out a card to those, as you were talking about, for next year?
Well, for the renewal, yes.
Yes, for the renewal, yeah. Yeah, so we wouldn't have 4,500 after again?
No.
Okay.
And I'm also, I'm planning on replacing this current roadwork box here. This is kind of the current stuff, I'm planning on replacing this with the senior tax freeze link, so that it's visible on the website, on the homepage.
That looked like a picture of Calaway County, by the way. At first.
No, it wasn't.
It wasn't, is that the Cross Osage?
I don't know where Clark Hill is.
This one, that's, that is probably looking across the river. Or, yeah, that's from, taken from Cole County, looking across the river.
So you could be partially right.
Yeah.
Well, Dawn, go over on the other side of the river and take a picture. This face is this one.
Well, we need more pictures, so if anybody wants to submit something.
Melissa, on the website, is there like something like where you would have the senior tax freeze or credit, whatever? Something that can kind of link or something that can, that would draw?
Um, that's not. Yeah, that's not really good website design, they do the blinky things anymore, cause they're not always, they don't get read well by all browsers and different, like, we better think about handicapped access or disabilities, people with disability, ADA compliance. So a lot of that kind of stuff.
But we tell them to press that they go to our website, pull it up, they're gonna be looking for it when they go to our.
And they can find it, they'll be able to find it here under, where that is, or how do I? And apply for, and it will be on that, how do I apply for the senior tax freeze, so.
You've done a good job on that.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, very good.
So, yeah, so there's a few little things still to work through, but I'll get that ironed out.
We were talking about starting in the middle of April. Mark forgot that he has the auditors coming, the middle of April, and forgot to book this room, which he needs. So we're gonna push back another week. He's gonna have his, the first week here with them, the auditors in this room, then we'll come the next week. The second week, the auditors come back, they're gonna just meet with him over at his office, so.
Sam mentioned having signs made.
Really good signs.
So I need to kind of know what that looks like, what kind of signs and like what they need to have on them. And like, are we just talking a senior tax freeze with an arrow?
Yeah, apply for senior tax freeze.
Second floor?
And put second floor, and then when they come up off the elevator to second floor, we need signs there directing them into the store.
Like on a, like on a stand type sign?
Yeah, there is a stand on that, the one that they use for.
People don't read it though.
But I mean, but if we make, if we make a bigger sign with bigger printing, maybe do a reverse, do a black, you know?
Somebody wants a blinking sign, call up here.
Yeah.
But, but I mean, make the sign big enough, and, and with big enough letters that they're gonna see it.
You can have it hit them in the head and wait in.
Exactly.
I don't think they're looking.
Would you put commission chambers, room 200, to tell them which room it is?
We can put it on that sign sitting down there, we can just print out on a piece of paper and put it on there.
And a lot, they don't even look at, they'll come right to our office and ask where they need to go.
They come up to our office to ask where to pay taxes at, you just walk by it.
So I mean, I, I could like print some larger ones from my plotter to put like on the glass as you're coming in. But the stand ones that we would have to have made, those are the ones I was kind of wanting to know, like.
You mean the whiteboards like down there already?
No, she's talking about one you'd sit on an easel.
So, yeah, would it be on an easel, would it be, I, I don't know any, I don't buy signs any, so I don't know what kind of signs.
The sign that's down there now is probably big enough, if we, if we make a, a sign that, that we're senior tax free, it's in big block letters.
Cause there is one down there now.
I wanna look at whatever he's talking about that stand that you're talking about, and I'll look and see if there's something.
A felt marker to mark it, I, I, I mean, I'm, I want something that really smacks them in the face.
I'll try and find something else, my. They won't appreciate it very much, but.
And then, and then when they get off to second floor, you know, we've, we've got the, the display cases, you could affix one to the bottom of that with an arrow pointing this way, and then just one on the door, so you got three signs.
Yeah.
I nominate Sam to smack them in the face, and then tell them they're not gonna get any relief until 2026.
I'll wear my, I got my saber, I'll get my 1840 caliber saber.
Get you an ambassador's.
Yeah, I'll just, I got a bunch of army helmets up and, I got one that's an MP helmet, I'll wear that.
The only thing changing on the approval later denial letter is, is I'm taking my name off the denial later and putting the commissions.
Put Jeff on there.
So, you were asking about who is gonna have the final approval?
Yeah, is it all right if they have all the information to approve them at that point in time when they hand it, hand in the information? I mean, that would be to me the.
Keep the flow going.
Keep the flow going. If they don't have the information, then it needs to be set aside and reviewed and follow whatever process we determine that's gonna be.
Cause the Dropbox ones, we won't be able to approve on the spot, yeah.
Just to counter people, over counter, you would be able to.
Yeah, cause I think Larry mentioned that there's some county that was, the commissioners wanted to have the final approval.
Yes.
On the each document.
I don't wanna go through that.
I think that would really slow down the process.
Jeff said he's gonna do that anyway.
I don't care. All we're gonna do is review and make sure that everything is checked, which online is gonna be checked. The only thing we gotta do is make sure the document verifies the age and residency, ownership.
You might, that's a lot of, that's, might be a lot of documents for one person.
We just, we need to specify who those approvers I think are gonna be.
Driver's license and a property tax bill?
Well, and, and that's what Ralph sent with his, I mean, he scanned in his real estate paid receipt, and both his and his wife's driver's license. So that was, you know, adequate information to make a determination.
To me, why ask them if they paid if we already know whether or not they?
We don't, we don't know that till they're here.
Yeah, so if we tell them that.
If we don't know who's applying, how do we know if they paid?
What, what year are you talking about they paid?
Well, in this instance, they'd have to pay 24 to apply in 25.
You already know that.
But I don't know who's applying until they come in.
What's your name? My name is Harry Otto. Collector's office, Harry, you still owe some tax, and it's there or it's not, it's already, the answer is already known.
But maybe they wouldn't waste the time to come into the office if they knew that that is a prerequisite, they wouldn't come in here and then be told that they come in here.
Somebody coming in here with a property tax receipt that says they paid, when I can tell them right here if they.
But if they bring their bill in thinking they don't have to pay it, they can.
Here it doesn't say that it has to be, you have to be current.
I don't think you're gonna have to worry about that really.
Add that on there, though.
That, what, you know, if somebody says they did pay, and they did it, are you gonna catch that? If somebody says, hey, I paid.
If they didn't bring a paid receipt with them, we're gonna look it up.
But we can save them a trip coming up here by saying, if you haven't paid your taxes, then you don't, you don't qualify.
Plus that receipt has their partial ID on it, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think there's, you know, you're gonna have the typical headaches on these escrow, you know, well, I've been paying my mortgage every month. Some of those slip, you know, they get screwed up once in a while, right? I mean, sometimes the, the escrow payment doesn't get to you in time, it, it can happen, it has happened. Where the taxpayer thinks he's paid the tax because he makes a payment every month and includes insurance and taxes, and sometimes things get screwed up.
Yeah.
But it's.
There'll be the exception, not true.
Yeah.
But you, I think you kinda have to design things to catch the exceptions and the unanticipated.
Well, certainly by April, we would know if, if that were the case, if there was a.
Yes.
A missed escrow payment, or, I mean, those.
And that's like Jill said, her, she does not have the little folder you give us, because her lender pays the taxes, pays the insurance, and so she does not get that little, she doesn't get that. So she's like, well, then what am I supposed to do? Well, Larry said, they'd come down and get a receipt from you.
Yeah.
So it's just another step, but.
They can, or they will have the ability to look it up while they're sitting there.
And you've answered two questions.
You know, if you go to title or pay for your car in sales tax now, and you don't take that with you, they just, they just hit a few buttons and see that they paid. They don't, they don't make you go back.
Now he's talking about what I told you initially, you just scan the license, you're already there, you can see if it's paid, not, and check yes, no.
Scan what?
That your Missouri driver's license. No, but don't you already have it, I mean, you have it, if you add it on that D, they're saying that they're currently paid. And for the mortgage ones, you may have to look those up if you're unsure.
That's not gonna be, that's not gonna consume really any time at all, because if we have the tax inquiry part of DevNote up here for everybody doing this.
Right.
They can look them up and.
And no, yep.
And no, I mean, that's not an issue.
And the person at home can go to your website and look up if they need a receipt or something, unprinted, or no, if they're current.
What, have you thought about the nosy neighbor who calls you and say, I want a list of those people who have applied?
Who? I.
Send us a sunshine request.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we'll make the clerk's office do it. It's okay, ain't it, Dawn?
Thanks for volunteering, Dawn.
Oh yeah, great.
I think the newspaper's gonna call you.
And ask who's applied?
Yeah.
No.
If there's somebody that is worthy of solving, he will, cause he's gonna, he's gonna come after me and say, did you apply? And if I say yes or no, but you voted against it, there, there's gonna be a lot of this. It's gonna, they're gonna go after the richest people in the community. No, listen, they're gonna go after the most affluent people in this community, find out that they applied, and find out how much school tax they were relieved of. Believe me, I'll bet you.
Yeah, I, I agree with Harry, I think that's true. They're gonna wanna know if you apply or not, cause you were against it, but, you know, some people can be against it and still apply.
So you're gonna be mad if somebody that's probably been paying these exorbitant taxes for forty some years, and now all of a sudden they're saving twenty-eight dollars or whatever it is that year, I mean, I don't, I don't see that necessarily happening. I mean, they're paying how many more dollars more than other people for their kids to go to school that may not pay any property taxes? I mean, they may rent somewhere and not pay any property taxes whatsoever, so I don't know. I'm sure there's gonna be some kinda nosy-nelly in there. But like I said, you can tell them to ask sunshine requests there.
So are we at a wrap-up point for today anyway? Or is there more things we need to?
What is our, what is our shoot date for application, April?
Whatever the week is after that week of the fourteenth or whatever, sixteenth or.
I think it was Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, right?
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, yeah, we just talked about that.
So you're gonna do 23rd, start on April 23rd?
I mean, that's, I would say that's still a tentative date, because it.
So we're shooting for?
We're somewhat dependent on Brian and Melissa.
I'm gonna be at a conference the, most of the week.
Why don't we go for May 1st?
Yeah.
Or the April 30th, if we need one.
We'll be ready, though. It'll be ready, the documents that move.
I don't, I don't care, we can do May 1st, it doesn't matter to me, that'd make Mark happy.
And then do it till the end of June, so they've got May and June to file?
I don't think we need to necessarily send, set an end date, we can say that. But if we still have a, a large group of people still coming in every day, then I'd say we'd wanna keep doing it just for a while.
I think we should set an end date.
Okay.
But be prepared to extend it if things hit some kind of problem and we need to extend it.
Okay.
I see what you're saying, no, but I just think the longer we put it out, the longer it gets people to wait, maybe.
So you do major in July, ended last year, July.
That's, that's fine, if everybody's in agreement with that, I mean, we talked about three months to begin with.
Seems like, I think Boone County is three months.
And you were gonna do a schedule that we could sign up on for lots of time to assist?
Yes. Okay, so we were talking, June 30th was kind of the cutoff date, now we're going to, July 31st is what we're shooting for, is that?
I would, I would do three months.
Yeah, we originally talked three months and I'm.
So May 1st to July 31st?
Don't tell Mark, though.
That's a good plan.
I think that is better, there, there are gonna be people that have due implications that, you know, that get in the way of getting here.
Okay, so we're kinda tentatively now, we're, are we looking at April 30th or Thursday, May 1st?
Right, cause the 30th is on a Wednesday, and April, May 1st is not till Thursday, and if you're doing it Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, are you gonna extend it one day up? Or just only do the Thursday and Friday?
I don't, it doesn't matter.
The 31st is on a Thursday, too, so if it started.
If we're gonna do Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, we need to do a Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
I think we all should put a number in the hat that how many applications come in, as of midnight on the 31st of July, and everyone's gonna put a dollar in.
No, you can't do that, Jill said you can't do that, that's a common.
Is there a database that you can just go in and say, how many have been approved, like if the Tribune did call and say, how many applicants have you gotten and approved? Can you just get a quick number, or you gotta go through?
I don't, I don't know, we didn't ask that.
I would think that would be able to pull if there's a flag.
There is some statistical stuff, and therefore that.
Just in case they say, how many approved, how many denied? Gotta throw that out there.
I mean, if they've already been entered and everything, there should be an approved flag that they should get the query.
Icicle on a stand or something.
Let's make sure we ask Jackie that.
Why you gotta get tied to the pose outrun and get?
Yeah, I like that, exactly, that was more fun.
Brian, who are these stations are you going to?
I was what I was told.
And they'll have scanners or whatever, so attached, do they bring their stuff, they can scan their thing?
They will have scanners. So on April 30th is your last day to put your guess in for how many we will have on 7/31. We'll figure out the prize. An icicle trophy or something. Or a set of cornhole awards, maybe.
Popsicles for everyone.
Anniversary submarine USS Missouri, I'll give you a ride on the submarine, of course, when they go out, they're on board six months.
Ride on it, not in it, do you hear me?
You're gonna ground us. We'll have a birthday cake, we'll have a birthday cake on July 31st.
Do we need to have another meeting next Tuesday, then, to see if we have any questions, or go through it, or test it, or anything, or?
Um, I mean, some of the, like, the form, I think we, the application, we can do via email, the form, um, I could probably, eh.
I think we can wait two weeks.
Yeah.
Really.
Well, let's do that, if something comes up, we need to meet next Tuesday, we'll add it to the agenda, so, Mel, can you put us on the agenda for Tuesday, then?
It'll have to be next week, because I'm gonna have that conference.
15th again, you're, are you gonna be gone the 15th, did you say, or the week after?
I will be, oh, the week of the 20, the 22nd through the 24th, I'll be out, so next week I'll be here. Oh, no, I won't be here Tuesday, I'm, I'm on vacation next week.
We'll have the auditors in here.
We're talking the week after that, though.
The week after.
We're talking the week after that.
The week of what? 22nd?
15th.
15.
The auditors.
The 15th, I'm, I've got, I'm on vacation that day.
That's right.
So.
We can meet around them.
But I can show, maybe show Brian how to, how to demo.
He'll give them a break, then he'll watch, right? Cause they have the computer set up, and you can do that.
Okay, so do it April 15th at 2 o'clock?
Can we do that, then, run the auditors and?
I can have, I can have, show Brian how to demo that, so.
Mark didn't reserve it for Tuesdays, the auditors, is that what you're saying?
He didn't?
No.
No.
Commission meeting days.
Oh, that's good.
Okay.
It's open on Tuesday.
Then we're good.
Okay.
Okay, so April 15th at 2 o'clock.
All right, got it.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all.
Melissa, I'll send you a.
I'm heading to, it might be better until 4:30.
All in favor?
Yeah, we'll have to look at the application, we'll have to, we all have to.